All right, well, the time is seven oh one. I'm gonna start the evening of the Oxford Board of Selectmen for July eighth, two thousand and twenty. And I'd like to read the governor's message pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen. And the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people they may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of the members of public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can actually access these proceedings. Before we get together, it's with a sad, sad heart that I would ask for a moment of silence and prayer for Jimmy Mac McDonald. Jimmy Jimmy was a member of the Oxford Police Department for over thirty-three years. And he retired just a year ago in July of two thousand and nineteen. Um, he's a real devoted man to the town, was an awesome officer. And I thought go to the McDonald family during this difficult time. And I would just ask for all of us to take a moment, please. Thank you. And the first item on our agenda is our COVID nineteen response update. And I'll turn this over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board members for attending this evening. As of July second, all the way to today, the number of COVID total cases for the town of Oxford rests at eighty-five. And sadly, I have to report, we did have another residential death related to COVID, bringing that up to ten. I will say that we've made excellent progress with our public health nurses in actually resolving the large portion of these eighty-five cases where we have at least ten active cases that are still being monitored by our public health nurses. Having said that, today was a grim milestone for our country. Over three million cases have been reported. Sixty thousand cases, which is a record high today alone within the last twenty-four hours for COVID. And of course, more than one hundred and thirty-four thousand deaths. We have been very proactive in this town, and we continue to provide these updates because it's really essential for us to be vigilant. Having said that, our local lawmakers, Representative Frost and McKenna, had also notified my office this week that they had been successful in garnering at least an amendment. They had filed at least two amendments, one for remote learning and one also for being able to provide nutritional assistance to our seniors and a number of other COVID-related efforts that we've made. The House Bill forty-eight oh two had been passed, and it was making certain appropriations related to COVID spending in anticipation that the federal government will be able to reimburse communities. This was an effort by lawmakers to take some of the millions, multimillions that have been marked for each state to figure out ways to help communities. We were successful, at least on one earmark, which was ten thousand dollars for the town of Oxford, which was included in those amendments. So we, I really do appreciate the efforts that they made. They knew that going into it, a lot of the larger dollars will go to Mima efforts, but this would be specific for the town of Oxford. So we're grateful to their efforts and the success for that, and it will go towards the additional expenses we have been incurring related to COVID pandemic. On the heels of that, I know I've been very open with this board about having applied for whatever grant money that we can to address some of the additional expenditures. And as you know, that the Federal Cares Act had come in on the first wave from the United States Congress in a way of trying to help communities. However, defining how that money would be spent or distributed was something that was still yet to be determined. You know that I had been successful in garnering a an actual firm that works expertly with federal grants, and that firm has helped us file a grant for CARES Act money. We were notified as of yesterday that we have going to be receiving sixty thousand dollars, two hundred, sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars related to our expenses. And again, that doesn't cover everything. We have more money that needs to be covered for Mima. And again, it's, it will be a drop in the bucket if we continue trying to actually implement all the things that we know will keep this community safe despite what might be happening in other parts of the country. I also wanted to alert the board that the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, as of Monday, June twenty-second, had noticed, notified us that all licenses for on-premise consumption of alcohol may commence their indoor table seating, which you know has started. But they have to also follow the guidelines that the governor has set forth in terms of a safety standards and checklist. We've been working very closely with our border health agents as restaurants and eating establishments have been trying to open. Of course, we've had a number of outdoor permits that we've issued because this board has been very proactive and allowed the management team to work with our inspectors to get places inspected. But the indoor aspect is very important for those people who didn't really have an opportunity to provide outdoor dining. So we do have some establishments that are doing both because obviously, the reduced number of tables that they can offer patrons means that they have less flow of traffic coming into their establishment, and we're trying to be as helpful as possible. Having said that, also in your packet, you're going to see on June twenty-fifth, the Commissioner on Education regarding the fall school reopening guidelines has been providing our superintendents across the state with information. And if you look at your packet, you'll see the guidance is quite comprehensive. I did have some information that came by my office relative to the school committee, you know, reviewing these guidelines with the superintendent. And I think they're concerned about making, you know, a statement about unfunded mandates and that if there isn't funding to make something happen, that they would be in a position of not wanting that to happen. So as a school committee, they have a right to ask their legislators, and that's what they're asking is that, you know, whatever guidelines are being issued by the state, hopefully they'll also come with funding assistance. And I think one of the areas that is of concern that we had to put out funding for was remote learning once they closed the schools. So that would be an area. But I know our superintendent and our school committee are going to look at these guidelines. And hopefully, as we go through July and August, we'll have a better understanding of what that's going to mean for our school opening. And I know the superintendent will be making statements about that in the future. I just wanted to also remind the board that July twenty-sixth, which is a Sunday, will be the, I mean, excuse me, Saturday morning, July twenty-fifth at ten a.m. with a rain date of Sunday, July twenty-sixth, will be the high school graduation. I just want to make sure you have that on your calendars. And we're working on that special proclamation that this board would like to be able to give to every graduating senior, and that will be out at the Oxford High School field. I also wanted people to know that the Public Health Department through their executive office has issued a letter to municipal officials acknowledging that in the state of Massachusetts, we have been on the decline, hence we're in phase three, step one of reopening and trying to get eventually back to some sense of normalcy, but it has also been issuing an abundance of caution. My office has been on calls with the executive office, in particular, the calls through the MMA and the Lieutenant Governor's Office as we are slowly adhering to those guidelines as a community and trying to make sure that we can prolong and keep this wonderful trend of lower numbers despite what we're seeing in other parts of the country. I also wanted the board to know that the Worcester Regional Chamber of Commerce, once again, has reached out to my office recognizing that this is a long, steady effort that we have to make as a community to help our businesses, and they have also included, once again, that they're going to continue some of the grant and loan processes and opportunities to local businesses. And, you know, we continue to try to connect some of our local businesses to those, and I've included those in your packet as well. The other more sobering tone after our town meeting and, and also our town election, obviously, July first has come, and that's the beginning of the fiscal year for this town. And you'll see a memo that went out to all non-contracted town employees that was issued on June thirtieth before the start of the fiscal year regarding the reductions to the town's operational budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, which was voted by the townspeople at the local annual town meeting. And this memo basically outlines the loss of positions, the reduction of hours, and the halt of coalers and salary increases in order to have reduced our budget by over a million dollars because of the forecast that the state continues to to give us that the state of local aid will be severely reduced. We still do not have a state budget. We're still hoping that the legislature will convene sometime this month. It's, of course, very, very late to be receiving a budget, but once again, you know, as soon as that information comes out, I'll be sharing that with the board. And that, of course, will help dictate not only this year, but where the direction, general direction for overall declines and revenues will be going. I know this board has taken all the businesses very seriously. Some had been outreach to you as as they have been continuing to want to adhere to guidelines and, and looking for assistance from the town to open up as soon as possible. You adopted policies enabling outdoor dining. I'm proud to say that we've been able to issue all outdoor dining permits to eating establishments, dining establishments, including more recently, this past week, Oxford's casual dining, so that they will be able to continue to serve the public as we go forward all the way up to November first. And then, as you know, they'll be coming before this board for a permanent outdoor dining permit from you, excuse me. I also wanted to let you know that another thing that you're going to start to see from the town in the town manager's office is we're working with now each of the major buildings and municipal, municipal buildings, and we're working to open them up very slowly to make sure that we have what we need to have in place, a full plan and ways to make sure we keep services moving in the right direction and keeping our employees safe. Having said that, the Oxford Dog Park, which was a major grant initiative that we're all very, very proud of, and especially those people who raised individual funds to match that grant, that has now officially reopened. We never had the official grand opening because of the COVID, which was very sad, but we know that it's more important to try to open it for services that dog owners or pet owners would really like to see. Having said that, it reopened on July seventh, and it does have COVID nineteen specific restrictions. Humans are basically required to social distance when using the dog park. And water dishes, toys, and materials are not to be shared. And dog park visitors are also responsible for bringing their own waste bags, and dogs are supposed to be at the side of pet owners. So I know that a lot of people will be happy about that. And it's a beautiful park. So if you haven't seen it, go up and take a look. Then the last thing on my COVID nineteen update was to let you know that with this plan about opening up buildings this week, I'm meeting with the major other buildings, the library director, a meeting with the program manager in the community center, town hall. And what we're doing is every single one of these buildings has very unique missions, and what we're going to have to be able to do with our facilities is make sure that we have in place, we're adhering to guidelines, but also doing this in a way that both employees and patrons and residents feel safe about the services that we're giving. So I will, by the next meeting, be able, and you'll be actually getting a memo in advance of that about some of the procedures and the actual plans that we have for opening. Remember that even for our town hall, we never shut our entire town hall down with our full remote working of employees. We've always had employees working internally, the one person, one office, but now we're at, and we have been servicing people even just today. You know, in an effort to keep people's business going, but we are also going to come up with a couple little innovative ways of allowing people's work to be done in a, in a, I think, a more fluid way in allowing the public a more concierge service where maybe they don't even really need to come into the building, but we'll take care of that business and get it turned around to them. So we have an excellent idea of how to do that, and facilities hopefully will be able to help us with that. And that would conclude my COVID manager's report. You're muted, Mr. Chairman.
I said, thank you, Jen.
Okay.
We appreciate that update as always, but you're still on because the next one, agenda item is your manager's report.
Thank you, thank you. And just to let you know that I'll close my manager's report by just reminding you that that at our next meeting, we have a number of public hearings that we'll have to get through. And some of these have been, been waiting in the wings as we've been dealing with the COVID nineteen pandemic. So the first item on the manager's report will be the minutes. The board is, at this point in time, I'm requesting that they approve the minutes for June fifth. Selectmen Daniels were the only one that was not present at that time, and I would look for approval of those minutes.
Okay, and a motion to approve the minutes for June fifth.
I make that motion.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. They are.
Thank you. On a bright note, the next item has to do with a fire EMS grant. Chief McDonald has informed my office that the department has been awarded a three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollar student awareness fire education safety grant and also a two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollar senior safe grant. And with the Mass General Laws for Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, we look for an approval to accept that grant on behalf of the town, both those grants, excuse me.
I would entertain a motion to approve the three hundred, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred, nine, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five hundred dollar cash donation and a two thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollar cash donation.
I make that motion.
Second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. We gladly accept and say thank you.
Thank you. The next item has to do with the selection of a housing authority member. Our town clerk has asked and requested that the board vote to affirm Patricia Fedella her role on the housing authority as we're waiting the state to confirm a person currently elected that they can serve until a successor is elected and qualified. So we're looking for an affirmation that she could continue to do that.
I'll entertain a motion that we affirm the state, the allowing of Patricia Fedella to continue as a member of the Oxford Housing Authority until a successor is qualified through election or an appointment.
Make that motion.
Yes. Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. She can stay on, and I thank Patricia for that.
Thank you. The next item has to do with Roxy and Cory's outdoor business permit. Ms. Cory has applied for a new outdoor business permit to have a stand, be able to sell corn and pumpkins in front of the Route twelve variety store at South Sixth Main Street. The permit would be effective as soon as possible if it's approved and would end on November first, two thousand and twenty. And those operational hours are during the daytime from nine a.m. to seven p.m. In your packet, under the tab four, you'll see that our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Lanciani, has approved that, but it's a vote by approval of the Board of Selectmen.
Then paint a motion to approve that outdoor business.
I make a motion to approve the outdoor business permit for Roxanne Cory.
Second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. She's all set.
Okay, and the next item has to do with what had previously been a dangerous dog ruling from this town board. The dog Ruby, the animal control officer, Kelly Flynn, had provided an update recently on the stipulations that this board made for the fencing of Ruby as a dangerous dog. Those were issued on May fourteenth in regards to the fencing requirement for containment area in the backyard. The dog owner is requesting an extension to complete the work. And the owner is citing some financial difficulties and requesting an extension to August to fence the area. Our animal control officer had also reported that the owner has been abiding by the other rules that the board had stipulated in terms of how to address the dog.
I'll entertain a motion on this issue.
I make a motion that the board extend the fencing requirement for dangerous dog Ruby until August thirty-first.
Second the motion.
A motion and a second. Do I have any comments?
I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I certainly understand financial restraints as a reason for needing the extension. I'm just curious. Is this? Are we certain that this is going to happen by August thirty-first? Or what happens if it's not, I guess?
You know, I'm not the, the dog officer, the animal control officer. I do believe that Kelly Flynn has provided information, which she feels right at this point in time, that the efforts on the behalf of the dog owners are sincere and that they do plan to do this and that it's not trying to shirk the responsibility at this point in time. If it doesn't happen, I think our animal control officer will be before you, you know, before that date. So I know she's following it very closely, and that's one of the reasons she's bringing it back before the board.
Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for a vote then.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. We'll give Ruby until August thirty-first. Thank you.
Thank you. No problem. The next item is just to inform the board that the office had been notified that Access Oxford had sent communication that they will no longer be operational as of July first, two thousand and twenty, and as the corporation had been formally dissolved. I just want the board to know that I did meet with the president of Oxford Access and that we went through a number of things that were very important in trying to create a smooth transition. And one of the things that I imparted to Access Oxford is recognition of all the work that had been done over the years, that, you know, it would be a charge of this administration to make sure that the valuable work that has been documented over the many years will be, you know, safeguarded and make sure that we have the ability to keep those documents that have been sort of recording the, the history of the town. And I don't mean just town meetings. I'm talking about all the different types of events. And so very appreciative of the efforts that Access Oxford has made to make this transition smooth, and they did ask for some extra time to be able to move some of their items as they've been working and dissolving their corporation. And, and of course, that wasn't a problem at all to allow them to do. So I just wanted to say that as manager that, you know, I really appreciate those efforts on part of the Access Oxford Board and particularly the executive leadership. The next item was just to remind this board that a while ago, I brought up to the attention of the board that the, that we had a actual resident along with a couple other residents that live around Robinson Pond. And there were concerns when they had created this special district to prevent development around Robinson Pond that might actually affect the water quality going forward. There's been some new concerns that the residents are also, would like to see no power engine boats, only electric engine boats to be able to use Robinson Pond. We had a lengthy conversation, worked with the resident who also has been before the Conservation Commission. You can see in your packets, there is communication from Conservation Commission that they are also supportive of restricting gas and diesel-powered motorboats on all ponds, but in particular, the Robinson Pond, as you know, we have a fragile dam that is up there that doesn't belong to us, but is, you know, something on our radar, being concerned to need to be addressed in the future. But the residents have also submitted some information to you, to your board. And, you know, it is the intention that this article, we did not take up in the annual town meeting this past spring, but we do intend and expect that the Conservation Board, along with the resident, will wind up having an article to address this in the fall. So I just wanted to include that information that has been more recent and came at the end of June to the board. The next item is just to put on the radar, as you know, we're going to continue to try to find whatever revenues we can to drive up our collections and ability to have increased monies added to our budget, especially in the wake of the decline of overall revenues coming from the state and potentially our local collections. I wanted to alert this board that I have been approached, and so has the Tech Review Committee with a potentially new company that is looking to open up a cultivation center for marijuana. Once their plans a little bit more solidified, I plan to take a look at that and then have them come before the board because it would be an important thing, once again, to review such a plan. We do not have any host agreements with cultivators yet. From what I understand, this is a smaller footprint type of operation, but yields substantial revenues for the individual company, which would obviously, through some kind of host agreement, would be important for this town. So we have a retail operation, and we have medicinal operation. And the board has also entered into a community host agreement for another retail operation, which is the maximum we can have on that front, but nothing for cultivation. We have one manufacturing operation that is been going through the extensive building permitting process. And I, I believe, has been advanced quite along the way with our building commissioner and our planning board. And so all of those are moving along, but this will be a unique thing to, I think, to hear this company and and what kind of business it is and for the board to entertain potentially, you know, entering into some kind of arrangement if, if all of the things line up. But I wanted to put that on your radar. The next item is just to allow the board to know that I've included in the packet last month and the month before, the Council on Aging newsletters. As you know, our Council on Aging operation in terms of the overall senior social center had been shuttered because of COVID, but that did not stop our outreach counselor at the senior center. And also the shifting of some employees from in-town hall to work at the senior center because, of course, we had the retirement of Stacy Barr as our director. And I just wanted to let you know, there's been a lot of outreach that has been taking place, not only in terms of phone calls, but in terms of written correspondence. And I plan to meet with several of the Council on Aging members next week as we have this meeting this week about phased-in, slow operations back to the senior center. But you can see actually within the newsletter that there's already going to be a ice cream drive-through that the DPW is going to work with our senior center employees to help put that together. And also a podiatry clinic, which is something that's been on the radar for the outreach counselor. And that both of those, the ice cream drive-through, will be taking place on July seventeen and July twenty-first, the podiatry clinic. The clinic itself, because there had been a lot of The clinic itself, because there had been a lot of requests from some of the seniors in the area, and it's very important for seniors who have compromised vascular systems to have their feet worked on very frequently. And it will adhere to all of the, you know, safe distancing. And we're, you know, going to arrange it by appointment only. But I know that that has already generated a lot of attention. So we're going to try to assist our seniors in that way. And the final item is just to say, you know, there's a lot of things that we deal with that are very serious in nature, you know, through this board and through the town's officials' business. But today, I just wanted to end on a bright note and wish Selectmen Sad a happy birthday. And also to wish the town of Oxford a very happy birthday, since one and the same occurring on this day. So happy birthday to both Selectmen Sad and to the town of Oxford, and that would conclude my report.
I just want to say that it's the same day, July 8th, but it's not the same year.
No.
1713 for Oxford.
I know.
1714 for me.
That's right. Oh, sweet. All right. Well, thank you.
That's very important to know, John. Thank you. Very good, Jen. Thank you again. And Selectmen's request, we start with Selectman Triano.
I just wanted to, well, happy birthday, Selectman Sad.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just reiterate expressing condolences to Deb and her family and the Police Department and everyone who is, was touched by Mac. It was a terrible thing to lose him at such a young age. And I just really wanted to extend my condolences to his family because he will be sorely missed by this town. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, and very true words. Thank you. Selectman Daniels.
Good evening, everybody. First off, I didn't do it at the last meeting. I wanted to wait till this meeting and just congratulate Selectmen Sad and Selectmen Triano on their reelection into the select board. Also, happy birthday, John. I did not realize it was your birthday. And then also, another thing that I just wanted to throw out there. I talked about it at the meeting just before the town meeting, but it wasn't necessarily in a public setting, so I wanted to say this in a more of a public setting, recorded for other people to see in here. I just wanted to commend the town manager and Tom Purcell on their efforts with enforcing COVID policy during this time. I know it's been pretty tough for them and everything they've had to do just to do their jobs and abide by the law and make sure other people are abiding by the law. And let the town know that I fully support everything that they're doing during this time. Other than that, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mike. And I will double that statement that they have done a great, great job. And I also appreciate what they're doing, and they've done a good job. We'd be in a lot worse shape if it wasn't for them, as I'm concerned. But anyway, we'll go to Selectmen Sad.
Yes, I just want to echo Meghan's remarks regarding the passing of Officer McDonald. It was very impressive to see the turnout that came from all different police departments throughout the area to show their respects. Mac was well-liked. He served at the courthouse, his court office, for many years and got to know a lot of the officers from the surrounding towns, a lot of the residents from the surrounding towns. It was quite a tribute to him, and I certainly give my sincere condolences to Deb and the family. It was very, very nicely done as far as the ceremonies were concerned. And I wish the family the best. That's all I have.
Thank you, John. All I have is to echo both of you. I mean, you both have said it. And it just eats at your heart, you know, that somebody so young, you know, just retiring and has to pass away, and the poor family, you know. Now, I've known his girls for years because they grew up with my girls. And so we, same thing, you know, for my entire family, we wish them all the prayers and just good luck in dealing with it. The other thing I wanted to do, though, is I also wanted to thank Access Oxford. They have served this town for many years. They have, you know, always been there for all those little events or big events that occur in town, done a great job. I want to especially, you know, put his name out there. Tony Triano, he's the guy that started it. It was his, it was like a part of him, you know. He really, really had the town at heart, tried to do a great job. So I just personally would like to thank him, thank all the people that worked for that company. Did a great job. We thank them. And I just wanted to say that tonight. And that's all I have. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Second the motion.
And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. We are adjourned. I thank you all for showing your smiley faces tonight, and have a great week.